Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman, I'll show as absent, and Councilmember Moore, I'll show as absent.
Thank you. With that, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. The Pledge of Allegiance to the right of the United States of America. To the Republic of America, to the citizens of our nation, and to the people who live in this world. The Pledge of Allegiance is round.
Okay, we will move on. Approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances[45.64][45.64]introduced and or adopted under this agenda. Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So with that, that would be a three, two. Two absent. I will move on to announcements. The City of Cattati has special office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Cattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Cattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Roanoke Park Cattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.sonoma library dot org. The Cattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Cattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle dot com, N-I-X-L-E. The city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at cattatacity dot org. Saturday, April 29th, will be the first rate shopping cart race around Cattati, the Cattati Ittirad, and it starts with check-in at 10:00 a.m. at La Plaza Park. So that ought to be a lot of fun. And last but not least, the webcast from April 11th will be available upon request soon. Due to a software upgrade issue that affected many cities, including Cattati, the webstream was not functional. While this video of the meeting is not legally required, we will make it available soon. Please contact Lauren, the Deputy City Clerk, if you would like more information. Basically, in order for it to be put up on the website, it needs to be compressed while it's happening, because of changes they made in the software, not us, but the company that did it. That file is huge, so it can't be emailed, it can't be attached on the web. So they have not been able to compress it yet, but it is a very large file. If someone wants to come look at it, I believe someone said it was around 185 gigabytes. So anyways, we are still working to get it compressed, to get it up there. So at some point, hopefully, that will work. So with that, I will move on to the honorary mayor. We have Caitlin Slate of Rancho Cattati High School. Hi Caitlin. Welcome.
Hi. So hi, everyone. My name is Caitlin Slate, and I'm a sophomore, and I'm here to represent Rancho Cattati tonight. At our school, we are always looking for opportunities to reach out into our community and stay connected. Actually, there are a few events going on within the next few weeks. For example, tonight, we're hosting a dine and donate at Solis Tecca in Cattati through ASV, and just yesterday, we had a nighttime fundraiser held on campus. Our student body is very involved in the school spirit and keeping connected to the community around us. Thank you all so much for allowing me this wonderful opportunity to represent my school.
Thank you. We'll start, I guess I won't be starting on this side tonight. Wendy?
Oh, hi. Thank you for being here tonight. What year are you in high school right now?
I'm a sophomore.
Okay. And then do you have ideas for where you might go to college, or kind of future plans after high school?
I'm not really sure, like where, but I know that I want to be somewhere in the medical field.
Very good. Okay. And do you do any extracurriculars at school?
Yes, I play sports. I do soccer for high school, and then like outside of school, I play soccer and just stuff like that.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you for being here tonight, and I'll pass it on to the next guy.
Thank you very much, Caitlin. Great to have you here. Are you familiar with a group I was involved with for probably seven or eight years, Project Grad? Have you, and as a sophomore, you're not ready to graduate, I get that, but have you heard of that on campus yet?
Yeah, we've heard about it.
And of course, you know, it was in the paper, because there was, you know, unfortunately, some money was embezzled, a large sum of money. So I know there's a lot of events, fundraising events, that are going on for Project Grad. I really hope it's something that picks itself back up, which it hopefully should. There's just been a lot of really good, since I believe there was a statistic a few years ago, and I'm sure it's still true, since Project Grad has been employed in Sonoma County at all the various high schools, that there's not been, on graduation night, there's not been one alcohol or drug-related death of a graduating senior. It's pretty impressive when you can get to that stage. And I know when I was doing it as president for, like I said, five or six years, we didn't have 100% of the kids show up, and I will tell you, there was a lot of kids that were like, "Ah, that sounds kind of dumb, I don't know if I'd be interested." It's the coolest event, and Rancho puts on the best event. Okay, is anybody from any other high school tonight? Is there? I mean, seriously, it's a fantastic event. So I know the money is a big issue, and that's, you know, an issue for this year, but I think it'll come back. So I'd like you to, you know, think about it, and to maybe get involved, you know, while you're there as a junior, get involved doing decorations and things like that. And also, it's a great opportunity, because I know you guys have to do, is it 40 hours of community service?
Yeah, it's 40.
Yeah. Which seems like a lot, but, you know, we can suck up that time here in Cattati, no problem. So there's a lot of events that we have in the city, and, you know, keep checking our website, and when you see events coming up, like, "Oh, next month is going to be such-and-such," there's plenty of things you can do to help out and volunteer, and bring your friends. And let, you know, have a great conversation with those friends. This is April 25th. Is she not coming back?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Disregard that little mumbling I was just doing. So when you come back at our next meeting, it'd be great if you talked to some of your friends on campus, and just ask, you know, "Hey, you guys, is there stuff that we could be doing in the City of Cattati, for the City of Cattati, helping them out?" Because it's really important to learn that value early on, to give back to your community. So I just want to leave you with those words, and thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Is there anybody that you brought with you that you would like to introduce to us?
Yeah, this is my mom, Kathy.
Hi. I'm sure you're very proud of Caitlin. John spoke about volunteering, and one of the things that you also might want to consider, many of the hospitals, and I assume even some doctor's offices, also look for volunteers. And since you want to get into the medical field, that's also another way, by volunteering, to kind of get involved and get to know people. I know that sometimes that helps further on down the line, when you're looking to be employed, if you've, if they know who you are and know about you. So that's just a little tidbit of information. So we really appreciate you coming tonight. We don't expect you to stay if you don't want to. You certainly are welcome to stay, but we do understand that it's a school evening, and we look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. And then we will have a nice honorary mayor certificate, and you can fill us in on what you learned from your friends.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Madam Mayor? May I speak with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Berich, a former city council member. And I want to speak to the honorary mayor who spoke to you a couple of weeks ago. The nice young lady came before you, and I understand that you had invited her back at this meeting to give you a report, gave her some little bit of homework and some questions to ask, and she hasn't returned. So my question is, Mr. Moore had asked the nice young lady, "Do you know what you're doing here? Do you know what this is about?" She said, "No." She said, "Did anybody at the school tell you what this is about?" She says, "No." And again, it really begs the question, who's putting these kids up to this? They're coming here completely unprepared. I felt so bad for that little girl who came up here. She seemed embarrassed, put on the spot. I think, again, this program, I've asked for the last, what, six or eight months, what's happened to the program? Mr. Delosso says, "Well, you know, George, it's summertime. It's hard to get kids out here in the summertime. Don't you understand summertime?" Then when school started up, I asked where the program was, and, "Hey, well, school started, everybody's busy." I asked about the holidays. Where is the honorary mayor program? Well, it's the holidays, people were busy. So it was a good, I was under the understanding that you had taken my advice and done away with this program, because no other city in Sonoma County does this to their high school students and junior high school students. They think it's a waste of time, I've talked to them, and so forth. And now we have the honorary mayor program back, apparently, but the honorary mayors you're asking to come back are not coming back, maybe for good reason. I, again, want to say that I think this marching, these young people up here, is a bunch of political theater, trying to give the public the impression that you're so in touch with the youth and so forth. I don't think these plaques and these certificates that you're giving these young adults are worth the paper that they're written on. It's pretty common knowledge that our representatives on the city council are bought and paid-for politicians. They talk out of both sides of their mouths. They say one thing, they do another. You ask questions, you don't get a response back, and you're supposed to be role models for these young kids? You know, I find it astounding that you continue down this path of embarrassing these young adults, thinking that this place is somehow, some house of honor. And it's not. It hasn't been for a long, long time. It's a bunch of double talk, a bunch of false promises, and, you know, even the school principal, who brings these students forward, isn't doing his or her job in explaining what the program's about, because I don't think you know what the program's about. I've never seen it outlined, I've never seen it defined, I've never seen the city manager or staff give any kind of report on this, but it goes on and on, month after month. Sometimes we get an honorary mayor, sometimes we don't.
George, could you please wrap it up, please?
Oh, I'm over. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will move on.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
If I may just address the public comment, I think, I'm not sure that I've ever, I've seen nervous kids come up, I think every kid, I've seen nervous adults come up to the podium, certainly at times. I think, you know, what really potentially may embarrass any of the kids that are up there, I think would be when somebody stands up and berates the program immediately after these kids speak. I think that's what's inappropriate. And I think this program is a good program, and I've talked to other colleagues of mine who are council members, who actually think it's a great program and wish their city did it. And I'd be happy to have a conversation with Mr. Berich after the meeting and find out who specifically he heard from, because I kind of think that was made up. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Caitlin, for coming, and we hope to see you in a couple of weeks. And with that, we will move on to the proclamation. I have a proclamation. Richard, would you like to come up to the podium? I will read to you.
Thank you.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cattati recognizing April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas throughout America, tragic cases of violence against children occur frequently and senselessly, destroy innocent lives, and devastate families. And whereas the people of the City of Cattati believe in the celebration of life, diversity, and hope for the future through our children, and deplore and condemn acts of violence committed upon children of our communities. And whereas Moves, minimizing occurrences of violence in everyday society, and the Sonoma County Human Services Department are committed to raising individual and public consciousness of the need to care for all our children and to honor young lives lost. And whereas Moves has acquired a children's memorial flag from the Child Welfare League of America, which has become a recognizable symbol of the need to do a better job of protecting children, and which is sponsoring a national effort to memorialize child victims, and which has been adopted in other California communities. Whereas it is urged to all citizens to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse and child death, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 25th day of April 2017, that the City Council of the City of Cattati does hereby proclaim the 4th Friday in April as Children's Memorial Day. Be it further proclaimed, that the children's memorial flag will be flown for the month of April by the City of Cattati, and for a week whenever a child dies by violence in the City of Cattati in remembrance of young lives cut short by senseless violence.
Well, good evening, everyone. And it's always a pleasure to be sitting or standing at the lectern rather than being there, although I certainly love my time there. But I want to thank the City of Cattati for those wonderful words, and they're poignant, and they're purposeful, you know? There's no doubt about that. If you looked at the flyer, or actually the insert that came with the last Sunday's newspaper, The Press Democrat, they had a lot of wonderful statistics, wonderful, excuse me, wrong choice of words, they had some very glaring and frightening statistics related to child abuse of that, being 5,516 reports of child abuse in Sonoma County in 2016, and then 58,000 reports of child abuse in the Bay Area every year, and then nationally, 3.5 million reports of child abuse in the United States every year. So how do we impact that as organization moves? Well, you know, what we do at Moves, and by the way, just for clarification, and I'll make this brief, am I on the timer? Moves was actually put in motion right here in the City of Cattati, at our, at a Mayor's and Council Members Association meeting, and I might have been the chair of that association at that time. We met in Cafe Louise, which of course is long gone, but they really had wonderful lemon poppy seed muffins, for those of you that remember that. But we all crammed in there, you can imagine, because it's now what is called, what's Marvin's, I guess, so in that spot, and we had all the councils and general city managers. And Arnold Rosenfield, Judge Arnold Rosenfield, proposed this concept, and there were a number of people that signed on right away. We had, we started out with a board of nearly 20 people, lots of pacifist people, supporters of nonviolence, mayors and council members from around the county. So in any case, it took on a lot of great momentum, and then we started doing different things. We started honoring people once a year, and we started working with various organizations during Child Abuse Prevention Month. So that's where we are today, and unfortunately, I say that because most of the people that are involved in Moves are very busy people. And so we can actually do very minimal work, but a lot of what we do is to make people aware of the, what they can do to minimize occurrences of violence in the community, and begin the long process of getting people to actively participate in the process of making our community less violent. And there is quite a bit of violence out there. So anyway, I want to thank the City of Cattati for producing this proclamation, and also for flying the flag, Lauren. I assume you waved it and raised it up the flight pole? Yeah, okay. So should I come around here?
We'll come down in a minute, but I was going to see if anybody wanted to say anything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work at this organization. It's really wonderful.
Yeah, it's, this is one of those groups you wish would have ceased to have a need to exist years ago.
Precisely.
And clearly, that's not the case. So yeah, carry on the good work, and I think the mayor, you know, the words were very poignant, as you stated in the proclamation, so, but thanks for your work, Richard.
Thank you, John.
Yes, thank you, Richard, for all that you do, and even if it's, you know, one child at a time that you help, that's all that we, that is all that we can ask for, and it is unfortunate that any child has to go through violence. And with that, we will give you a proclamation and get a picture.
Thank you very much. Would you like some blue ribbons? Three little bells. One, two, three. We need to get our, all the, the, the. Who's crazy? Yeah, I don't feel so bad. All right, smile. Cool. Can you take it? It takes you. Thank you, Damien. All right. And, Mayor? Thank you. All right. Anybody else want a blue? Okay? We've got a few. One more in the heart. Thank you. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, with that, while Richard is handing out blue ribbons, we'll move on to item number eight, approval of the final agenda. I just want to make an announcement here. If you are here for 100 Valprezo, item 12A, this public hearing has been re-noticed for May 9th, the May 9th, a city council meeting. If you're unable to attend that meeting, you can submit written comments to the Community Development Department prior to that meeting, but I just didn't want folks to hang around if that's what they're here for, since we won't be doing that item tonight. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No changes, ma'am.
Okay. With that, we will move on to citizens' business and public comment on the consent calendar. Any members of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2016-1, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability or combination has been requested. So with that, are there any speaker cards? No?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, I brought up the issue that Roanoke Park has been successfully working with the local cable company and providing the community a public access channel, Cable Channel 26. And on that channel, most of us can find live streaming of the Roanoke Park City Council meetings, rebroadcasts of the Roanoke Park City Council meetings, rebroadcasts of the Sonoma County Supervisors meetings, along with a whole smorgasbord of public service messages, invitations, announcements, and a lot of fun stuff to do in Roanoke Park. And I brought up the fact that Cattati has a right to its own public access or government access channel since the 1996 Federal Cable Act. However, I brought my concerns up to the local cable company, and they've told me, not knowing who I was, or I am, told me that, "Well, no, George, Cattati doesn't want their own channel. We've already asked them." When I brought this before you, you instructed, council instructed staff to please look into this, and it's been a month. At the last city council meeting, I waited for Damian to give us a report on this, as you requested. We got no report. I'm hoping we're going to get a report tonight, but I haven't heard anything since. But the fact is, we should have our own cable channel. Not everybody is computer savvy, and they want, might want to watch the city councils live on cable television. And the other issue has to do with the last city council meeting. We were assured by the city manager that the city council meeting was indeed being recorded audio and video, and that, he apologized that we were not live-streaming the meeting, but we would get the recording. I'm not sure if I could follow the mayor's explanation tonight, but I find it really disturbing that anybody told you that the city council meetings are so data-heavy that they would consist of 18 gigabytes of data. That's absurd. I've been in the video/audio field for over 30 years, and what I'm recording on tonight in my pocket would take up less than a gigabyte in high definition. So someone's pulling your leg, Mayor, with all due respect. And the fact that that, this company, who's responsible for web-streaming and archiving these meetings, hasn't been able to deliver to this city in two weeks, a hard copy on a DVD or a thumb drive of this meeting stinks to high heaven. Something's wrong. Multiple times, these meetings have not been recorded and telecast. Number of times, we've gotten a runaround. We have spent literally a fortune on this system, and I don't know how many breaches of contract you people need to endure before you start asking some serious questions or asking for your money back. Something's not right here. There's no reason that we're getting, given this runaround about these meetings. These proceedings recorded are essential to the community, they're essential to the city in protecting their rights and responsibilities, and also protecting the citizens in making sure that we're putting the city on notice. Mayor, I'm almost done here. So I would, again, ask for an explanation tonight, and I don't want another runaround about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
First thing, I'm wearing this pin to memorize, eh, memorat, you know the word.
Memorialize, I think it's.
Cindy Moreland, who was a Cattati teenager who was killed and murdered in 1981, who was my friend who lived four days doors down. Second thing I wanted, because I don't have a right to speak on it, was the future and agenda items. The PG theme was only in the Community Voice on Friday, it was only agendas, it's not properly noticed. It shouldn't be on the agenda. It's supposed to have 10 days. And I sent everybody the rules on that. I find it very interesting that Mark Laman and Mr. Moore are not here, because they have the most conflict of interest. I found major conflict of interest of Mark Laman, working for Lean Energy U.S., being on staff, working for Sonoma Clean Power, all this. I've already had things with John Moore. Damian over here, everything I've sent for the last 10 days, he's sent this nonsical thing to frustrate me. He's acting like a child. But you need, you three at least need to have these people, these two put up on ethical charts, ethical grounds, and they need to be stepping down because of their conflicts of interest. Mark Laman had improper contact with the district attorney, she's acknowledged it. You guys need to really decide what you're doing, because it's, and I've also figured out how the housing developers, Sonoma Clean Power, private companies and everything are done. So I'm going to start reading a list of other people with conflicts of interest. Developer Bill Galaher, I can't say this guy's name, Comren Socia Shadini, project manager for acquisition development, San Rosa-based OCLS Management LLC. He's a vester in Sonoma Clean Powder, Oakmont Living, and the Community Housing Commission. He's a Sonoma County Planning Commissioner. He's a housing developer for Windsor and Doug Bosco, a principal investor and general counsel for Sonoma Media Investments, which owns the Press Democrat, also is an investor at Sonoma Clean Power.
Lori, are you almost done? Thank you. Anyone else wishing, yes? Hi.
Mayor and council members, my name's Kirsten Mensch. I own a newer business here in town, the Hen House Boutique, which is right down here on La Plaza. Today, somebody very nice from the city came by and asked us to remove all of our A-frame boards where we have our little advertisements for our businesses. I was aware that we weren't supposed to put the A-frame boards out. However, I did it because I had the A-frame board already made when my business was in Petaluma, and I didn't have any space for it anywhere in the store, so we put it out. This A-frame board has brought us a tremendous amount of walk-in business. We are kind of stuck down in that corner where the nail salon is and the barber shop, and you really can't see a storefront. We can have signage everywhere, but it doesn't really bring very much help. I've spent over $3,000 in print advertising in Sonoma County the last year that I've been here, and it has not brought in as many people as the A-frame boards. So I am one of four store owners here tonight, and we're just asking respectfully that something can be done, that we can put our A-frame boards out, of course, not heating the sidewalks, or if the city council has some better idea, we're more than welcome to listen to it. We just would like to see more foot traffic in our stores. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi. I'm Carolyn Basse. I own Your Sweet Expectations in La Plaza at the bakery. One of the solutions that we rolled around and thought maybe would be a cute idea, which I also just learned has kind of been discussed here previously, was to have, like when you're looking for a winery, and there's a post, and you've got the arrow and the business and that, maybe having something like that where there's businesses that are kind of tucked away like we are. And it can be cute, and Cattati is really looking beautiful and fun, and I think that could probably be incorporated with it too, maybe. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Quick. I'm Chantel Stroud. I own Nails &amp; Company in the same complex that have the Hen House and the Cake Place for 17 years. And this whole time, we've never put a sandwich board out until just recently. And we've done a lot of advertising as well in Cattati, and nothing other than, you know, social media has helped us, but this sandwich board is working for us. We've put it out there, and it's only, I just got mine out there, and it's only been a couple months, and then we've, somebody came by today. But I can't tell you how many people have found it very easy to come see our business, to come by, they knew where to turn. It's helped my business tremendously, having people be able to see it from the street out there. So like Carolyn said, a sign of some sort, something, you know, nice that would go with the city's structure would be nice, but otherwise, just give us some sort of feedback about maybe the sandwich boards being put out in a different manner or a different way that we can do it, because that sign has helped my business as well.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi. I'm definitely one of those adults that gets nervous.
Okay.
I'm Amy Strother. I own Speed P Children's Boutique in Cattati. And although my business has been in Cattati for 10, just over 10 years now, it's definitely not easy to have a business in Cattati, and I've seen a lot of businesses come and go. And the sandwich boards really do make a difference. The same day that the group did come for business outreach, I did have a new family come in and say that they didn't know I was there, but when they saw the board, they asked, "What's this?", and came and were so happy to find me. So I'd like to ask that the city think of a solution that would work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. And I will close citizens' business. Does anyone have any comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close that. So let's see here. Damian, would you care to address a couple of these items?
So I'll start with the last one first. We, you know, we are, we are working on the Wayfinding Program, which will segue into the Business Signage Program. So there is that, I mean, that's on the horizon. But I think, you know, Vicki and I can discuss if there's other sort of interim things that we can do, and see, you know, see if there's anything there. And then...
So I'd appreciate it if you'd work, especially with that area, because I agree they are in the back end. Maybe it's a matter of even speaking to the business, or the building owner. I know that some of the businesses have a nice sign out in front that kind of lists, you know, maybe there's something that can be done there. I don't know. Just a thought.
Yeah, we'll explore what alternatives there are between now and then, when that Business Signage Program's up and running. On the peg item, it was properly noticed. I don't know what more to say about that. And on the...
There are different noticing requirements for different items, depending upon what the item is. Is that not correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay.
If you will, I just want to mention that there are two alternative methods of noticing under the government code for ordinances. Government code was followed. I did see communication, I believe, from Ms. Alderman citing too, a section of the Public Utilities Code, which does require a 10-day notice. However, that section does not apply to the peg fee. It applies to water, energy, and I think gas and oil transmission. So that may be where the confusion lies.
Okay.
And then I'll, I'm continuing to look into some of the public access channel stuff. Thank you.
Okay. And George, actually, the file was even much bigger than that. It was 185 gigabytes, so it's huge. So however it is that they record that, I don't know how they record it. Well, okay. And it's way too big, and they are going to either put it on, just as you suggested, either a DVD or a flash drive if they can't get it compressed. I think that the hope was to get it compressed so that they could put it out on the website. But that has not been able to happen. And even the, as I understand it, the company whose software, they tried to work with us to get it compressed too, and we're not successful. So...
But I just don't believe it.
That's fine. And Madam Mayor, does it maybe have something to do with the fact that the meeting went a little bit past midnight, so we had quite a bit more data to crunch down? Well, there's, I mean, there's that, but it was just a big file, and it should have recorded compressed. So the fact that it didn't record compressed, that really was the issue.
And I will add, just, you know, to put it in perspective, like a high-definition movie, maybe it's two hours long, that fits on a DVD, this is over five hours of high-definition video, so it's a big file.
Okay. And you, when do you anticipate that we might find out more information about the public access television? Next couple of months, month?
Yeah, I mean, we'll know pretty quick.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So with that, we will move on to direction for future agenda items. And I have a note on that. The city council has currently allocated $15,000 to the Chamber of Commerce and $2,400 in various waivers of fees or staff time for events in the current fiscal year, allowing for an additional waiver of up to $2,600. We can allocate $5,000 to Project Graduation this fiscal year at the May 9th meeting, if there's interest in that. Just a thought.
So do we need to give direction to staff to bring something like that back then to the future? I think it'd be certainly worth a public discussion, so why not? Yeah, I'm not saying that we're going to approve anything, but I think we should bring it back. I would be in favor.
Okay. With that, is there any other future items? Okay. Then consent calendar. There are no items. Public hearings. The, now, we have the 100 Valprezo vesting map amendment, and this item was noticed to be heard tonight, but it has been re-noticed and moved to May 9th. So other than that, is that all that needs to be stated? Ramon?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Is there anyone that wants to speak on that that's already here tonight? Seeing none, I will close that. Then we will move on to item 12B, adoption of an ordinance to reauthorize the public education and governmental, AKA peg fee, and amend section 5.22.115 of the Cattati Municipal Code. Do we have a staff report on that?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So measure G, there's a measure G Oversight Committee, Citizen Oversight Committee. That's a five-member committee. And recently, after this last oversight meeting, Yvonne Van Dyke, who is council member, Vice Mayor Landman's appointment to the Measure G Oversight Committee, notified the city that she wanted to step down to pursue, you know, other things in retirement. And so we, the city advertised for new applicants through numerous channels, and we received two applications. And James O'Rourke is one of the applications that's in the packet. He was the one, he was the applicant that Vice Mayor Lammon wished to nominate for the position. There's also another application in the packet for Julie, I believe, Julie Dempsey, who was the other potential candidate. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay. Open this up for public comment. Yes, Lori?
I regularly check the website for, and anything that's out by the city, there was no notifications. I'd like Damian to explain what he means, many channels. There was Bicycle Committee, and there was the Library Commission or something, but there was nothing there for Measure G Citizens Committee. It's supposed to be an independent, the ballot measure says this is supposed to be an independent commission. It shouldn't be that the mayor, vice mayor gets to pick and choose. That person becomes the vice chair of the committee who is appointed. This is not the independent oversight that we were promised as the ballot measure. It was not advertised. It was pick and choose, put people on, so you get what you want. There was absolutely no discussion on the report this last meeting, because you played games, basically. And this is manipulation. It's just playing, and if, why should it be even happen tonight if Mark Lammon's not here, the person who nominated him, the person? Mark Lammon's got these conflicts of interest and his problems anyways right now. He needs to not be nominating people. Thank you.
Yes, George?
I agree with Lori. This is not the independent oversight that was sold to the public through the ballot process. I think this is a huge fraud being perpetrated on the community, to think that there's any independence on this subcommittee at all. These are political appointees by the city council. If you were truly wanted to uphold the spirit of the ballot measure, you would properly notice and advertise these positions. You would take these names, and you would put them into a hat, and you would do a drawing to make sure you had a impartial and independent oversight committee that's picked at random. When I suggested that the city council actually have people on the oversight committee who voted against Measure G, council member Moore said that he thought that was ridiculous, that he would never support anybody on the oversight committee who did not support Measure G. And that's preposterous. That's exactly who you want on an oversight committee. You want people who can think independently, who can think critically, who don't necessarily swallow and digest the propaganda that comes out of the city manager's office. You want critical thinkers. You want independent thinkers to be able to help you do your job better, not a bunch of lapdogs, not a bunch of yes-men, yes-women, and so forth, who are looking for appointments onto your design review board and planning commission and the other crony committees that you have in Cattati over the years, because that's how politics has worked in Cattati, and it's long overdue that it be changed. The citizens ask for independent oversight. You have a duty to provide independent oversight. And by politically appointing people is doing just the opposite.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Damian, could you speak to the noticing on this, please?
Sure. So I'll just read from the staff report. It was advertised in the Community Voice, on the marquee, the city website, and social media. It was advertised.
And we received two applications through that process?
We did, yeah. We received two applications through the process.
Okay. And... This is not the independent oversight that we were promised as the ballot measure. It was not advertised. It was pick and choose, put people on so you get what you want. There was absolutely no discussion on the, on the report this last meeting because you played games, basically. And this is manipulation. It's just playing, and if, why should it be even happen tonight if Mark Landman's not here, the person who nominated him, the person? Mark Landman's got these conflicts of interest and his problems anyways right now. He needs to not be nominating people. Thank you.
Yes, George?
I agree with Lori. This is not the independent oversight that was sold to the public through the ballot process. I think this is a huge fraud being perpetrated on the community to think that this, there's any independence on this subcommittee at all. These are political appointees by the city council. If you were truly wanted to uphold the spirit of the ballot measure, you would properly notice and advertise these positions. You would take these names and you would put them into a hat and you would do a drawing to make sure you had a impartial and independent oversight committee that is picked at random. When I suggested that the city council actually have people on the oversight committee who voted against Measure G, council member Morris said that he thought that was ridiculous, that he would never support anybody on the oversight committee who did not support Measure G. And that's preposterous. That's exactly who you want on an oversight committee. You want people who can think independently, who can think critically, who don't necessarily swallow and digest the propaganda that comes out of the city manager's office. You want critical thinkers, you want independent thinkers to be able to help you do your job better. Not a bunch of lapdogs, not a bunch of yes men, yes women, and so forth, who are looking for appointments onto your design review board and planning commission and the other crony committees that you have in Cattati over the years. Because that's how politics has worked in Cattati, and it's long overdue that it be changed. The citizens ask for independent oversight. You have a duty to provide independent oversight. And by politically appointing people is doing just the opposite.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Damian, could you speak to the noticing on this, please?
Sure. So I'll just read from the staff report. It was advertised in the Community Voice on the marquee, the city website, and social media. It was advertised.
And we received two applications through that process?
We did, yeah. We received two applications through the process.
And as I understand it, from Vice Mayor Landman, he does not know either of these individuals. And neither of the individuals reached out to him, so he has had no, no conversation with either of them. And just, you know, looked at what was on the application and, and made his, made his choice. That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
So, and so this is his choice, and it's up to us to either ratify that or make another choice for him.
Comments?
Comments, sure.
Yeah, I was, that was my main question was how the second applicant got to know that, you know, here's this application filled out, and the one box checked is Measure G Oversight Committee. So Ms. Dempsey, who certainly also seems like a qualified individual, you know, a Realtor, has been past president of the Board of Directors of North Bay Association of Realtors. Certainly Mr. O'Rourke here has a J D. He's clearly a well-educated individual. I mean, I think they, they both are, and both have stated on the applications, which I really liked, is that they want to just give back to their community. And I think that's very, very admirable. So, but I was curious how the second individual, you know, if there was this intonation that, you know, somebody was handpicked, but, but two people applied. So, so that clarifies that a bit, so I appreciate that. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion of one over the other. And I, I mean, I would certainly go with what the vice mayor has recommended, but I'm going to go ahead and pass the baton.
Well, and just a quick question. The reason why Mr. Landman, or Councilman, Vice Mayor Landman is the one choosing this person is because his nominee is the one who's stepping down.
Correct.
Just choosing among the applicants for the replacement.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. So no, I have no further comments, so if you want to.
You know, well, I know you're going to make a motion, right?
Go ahead.
Because it's either you or me tonight. There's not so many of us to make motions. You know, the one thing I will say is, I know the individual I selected when I spoke to her in advance of, you know, would you be interested in applying for something like this? This was somebody who actually was opposed to Measure G. And I have no idea how the individual voted. I never asked that question, but was very critical with questions about, well, you know, here's what I think, and here's what I think. And I go, well, that sounds really good. I mean, it's good to have, you know, that diversity and, you know, kind of cross pollination. So I think when that person filled out an application, I thought, well, this is great. And that's somebody that I would like to appoint. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Go ahead.
All right. So I would move to ratify the vice mayor's nominee for appointment to the Measure G Citizens Oversight Committee.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Let that be a three-two vote. And we'll move on to the next fun item. Glad to see we're finally here on this.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Craig Scott. I'm the Public Works Director here and City Engineer. And tonight's presentation is, we've reached a decision point on the Sustainable Groundwater Act. How we're, we've worked with staff from other agencies over the last two years to develop a plan to comply with what's called SIGMA. And so tonight, we've, we've reached a decision point that we'll be asking you to make. The, I'll just start with an overview for tonight's presentation, which, which has a lot of content in it, but some of it's review, so I might be scanning, skimming over some of it. The, I'll go over the background, who was affected by the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, the proposed governance structure, startup costs and staffing for the new agency, next steps, and the recommended actions for tonight. Okay, so in 2015, the state passed SIGMA Act to manage groundwater basins in California. And along with that, the state identified groundwater basins in the state as being either low, medium, or high priority basins. And within the, within Sonoma County, there were three groundwater basins that were identified as medium. So the significance of that is, we, these basins need to comply with the act. And we are within the Santa Rosa Basin with the, I guess that comes later in the, how the three basins coordinate together. But this is just sort of, the next slide shows the, kind of gives an idea of the scope of groundwater use within the Santa Rosa Basin. We've got wells in the unincorporated area, which comprise the vast majority of the wells. And then we have wells within the urban areas. Here within Cattati, we do currently allow private wells, and then we have our three city wells. So they would be subject to the, these regulations. And the rural, domestic, and unincorporated county, these are just estimates because none of these wells were metered. About fifty percent of the groundwater use in the basin, agricultural thirty-two percent, and urban eighteen percent. Now, urban, I just want to make a note of that it would be much higher if it wasn't for this very established significant surface and complex surface water system that has been developed and which, which really is part of the whole, you know, management of water, including groundwater, in our area. The required steps, and we're focusing on the first one here, is to form a groundwater sustainability agency. And that, the act provides a deadline of June thirtieth, which has come upon us very quickly. If we were not to form an agency locally, then the default agency would be the county. And if they were not to step forward, then the state would come in and manage it on our behalf. And so that would be done non-locally, from afar. And so one of the principles that all of the agencies and councils reviewed and agreed to was that local is better than anything that the state could do for us in this regard. The other, coming out of this step two would be to develop a sustainability plan, and that would be due by January thirty-first, 2022. And then finally, twenty years from that to have achieved sustainability. Okay, this is what I was kind of alluding to before with the three basins. We have in Sonoma County, these three medium priority basins. And we are to, one of the goals was to have a, to form a GSA, one for each. You could have multiple GSAs per basin, or just one. And multiple would be very complex and, you know, very complicated because the law requires those to be coordinated. And so you'd have all sorts of agreements. You'd have the individual agreements to be GSAs, and then agreements between all the GSAs, and then they'd have to somehow get together and, and create a plan and coordinate all their activities. So we said, you know, let's, let's form one per basin, and then have these three GSAs work together and achieve any cost benefits of, of, of working together, you know, any, any commonality between the basins for developing the plan, or their approaches. For example, the, this whole process, we had coordinated between them, and anytime anybody developed something that worked, we like stole it. So there's a lot of interplay between these three basins in this process, just to form the GSAs. Okay. So the, the act is to achieve sustainability in groundwater basins in the state of California. And to do that, they are allowing these agencies to form. And so these agencies have some ability to manage the basins, they're giving these authorities. I think this came out of, you know, the first try at this was AB thirty-thirty, but it just had no teeth. You had this groundwater advisory committee formed, and for our basin, this area, it created a tremendous amount of information about the basin with the USGS study. And so that's definitely going to, it hurdles us forward in this process. A lot of that's going to be worked into the GSP. The thing is, that's kind of what it could do, is study the basin, but it couldn't turn around and have any regulatory authority. So that's why, sort of what prompted the act. Who is affected by the GSA is, it's, you know, it was shown on the former slide, all the well owners in the Sonoma, Santa Rosa Basin, Santa Rosa Basin, sorry. And the act has a special provision for the de minimis users, which it's trying to, it's saying, hey, you know, we recognize that we need to manage and regulate all of the well owners, but there's going to be some that are so small that we need to treat in such a way that makes it manageable. So these are, these de minimis users are defined as those well owners that are domestic. They used two acre feet of water per year or less, and, which is equivalent to about six urban families, which sounds like a lot, but that, that's kind of when you look at the spread of these well users, a lot of them fall into this category. And then, so it makes sense to draw the line there. The GSAs would still be able to regulate the de minimis users, but they would not be able to put meters on those users' wells. Okay, so the act defines who eligible agencies that can manage, you know, be represented on these groundwater sustainability agencies. And these are agencies that have either water management authority, or land use authority, or a combination of both. And so you'll see cities and resource conservation districts. For the, what's highlighted here are the agencies, including us, that fall within the Santa Rosa Basin. And the Gold Ridge Resource Conservation District was just recently added in the spring. The act provides for agencies that aren't quite sure if they're eligible agencies to, to apply with the state, and that's a state decision. The state says, okay, you, you are an eligible agency, you meet those requirements, or you're not. And so they got the path, they got a yes on that, and they, I guess this is as good enough slide as any to, to say that Gold Ridge has decided, their board has decided to join what we're talking about tonight. And Sonoma County Water Agency also said, yes. County of Sonoma, yes. Town of Windsor decided to join. Roder Park, just recently this afternoon, made that decision. So I'll come back to that a little bit later, but I was just going to give you a sneak preview. Okay. So on to the proposed governance structure. This is what the staff working group has been working so diligently towards. Back in October of twenty, just last year, when was it? Yeah, twenty sixteen, actually. The agencies all were presented with governing principles, and these are the principles that the, where staff working group used to guide ourselves in developing this plan to comply with the act. So the, the vehicle, the mechanism that looked to be the most well-suited for this purpose was to have a JPA, to have provisions in there to tie all of these, that all of these eligible entities could then participate on as a GSA board with one representative from each GSA eligible entity. And the representation would be an elected, appointed official from each entity to serve on the board. And the eligibility, as I mentioned before, is determined by the state. GSA eligible entities that are being formed can receive an ex officio or a non-voting seat while the formation is in place. So the act does allow for agency groups, organizations, that if they go through the LAFCO process, or a special district, like the state can, they've done that already in a few places, areas in the, in the state, where say you, you have unique water management authority, and so we grant you that authority and to do certain things. So in these two instances, agencies may be forming over the next few years, decades, whenever, that would become eligible, and that don't exist today. And so there's a mechanism that those, within the JPA, for them to then join the board. Voting, it's one vote per entity, so the city of Cattati would have, as, with a board seat there, would have one vote per, one vote, just as, along with the city of Santa Rosa or the county, or anybody else that's on the board. And voting, there was quite a lot of discussion on voting, and there was an effort to try to keep it simple, but that's why we split it up amongst simple majority, super majority vote, and unanimous. So you, because we didn't want everything on one side of the scale, if everything was unanimous, then nothing, we could probably just lock down on any typo, any kind of vote that happens, because somebody doesn't show up to a board meeting, or whatever. And so certain items were broken out for a simple majority vote, and then certain other items for super majority, and just kept very specific items, either financial or changes to the JPA, certain changes to the JPA as being unanimous, votes of each board member's elected body. So it would come back to this body to vote, and then every, it's hard to explain, every agency would, would then go back to their respective boards and councils and supervisors, and then go back with, with their yes vote. The, the JPA, which is attached to the staff report, has been painstakingly drafted and redrafted and revised, and legal councils of each of the jurisdictions have, have been involved in this process, including our own Robin here. And included in the JPA are provisions that address the terms, powers, membership, board, the composition of the board of directors, meetings, voting, advisory, composition of the advisory committee, and financial provisions. There's just a whole slew of things that are in the JPA. It doesn't have to include everything. The more procedural operation of this board can be addressed in, like, like we do here in bylaws. And the bylaws can, can be outside of the, are outside of the JPA. So it just doesn't get too bogged down. Okay, so the JPA, as I mentioned, has provisions for a strong, very strong advisory body, and the purposes of which is to advise the GSA board on plan development and implementation. The board does not, it can take the recommendations of the advisory body, you know, under consideration, but it does not have to agree with them. The appointments, there'd be a formal application process to appoint the members to the advisory committee. Representation, there's a Representation, there's a, there's something written, the JPA has written into it what that composition will be. And we'll talk about that on the next slide. Two-year terms, and there'll be Brown Act meetings as well as the board. Okay, so, the composition, 18, got it down to 18 members of the advisory committee. And for the eligible entities, there'll be appointments for each of them. So, there's 10. There's the nine eligible entities. And then, the mutual water districts and the public-owned utilities are included on the board with one vote. There's six or seven agencies in there, but they'll be, have a seat at the board with one vote. And they're, they're included by agreement. So, we have the JPA agreement. And then, there's an, they have an MOU amongst themselves. And there's an agreement between the two to allow them to be on the board. And so, what we've included in this packet is the partnership agreement between them and us. And then, the MOU is also in there, just kind of for your reference. I don't think we're really prepared tonight to dive in detail on those agreements, but that just kind of gives you an idea of how this is structured. What else? Okay, so, for the at-large appointments, we have, well, okay, eligible entity appointments. This council, this body would then appoint staff. And we just envision I'd be the representative, and the city manager would be the alternate. And just kind of continue moving forward as we've been, been doing. That's just kind of what we were thinking about at this time. And then, at the, at large appointments, this addresses, this whole advisory committee addresses the act's intent to represent interests in the basin, a spectrum of interests in the basin. So, we've got two environmental representatives, two rural residential well owner representatives, a business community representative, two agricultural interests, and the Greaton Ranteria, which has just recently said, yep, we went in, we want to be, have a seat. The city of Sebastopol decided a week ago or so not to join the board, but they want to be on the advisory committee, which does not have a vote. And the reason for that is their wells are outside the basin. They have this little sliver of land that's within the Santa Rosa Basin. So, they are really not subject to the act as it stands now. If in the future, whatever basin they're in becomes designated from low to medium, then they would have to get together with whoever's on their basin and form a GSA. But they don't have a lot of skin in this game, so to speak. They, they just have a little sliver in this basin. So, there is a financial commitment and some other factors that weighed in on that decision. So, they will be on the advisory committee. Okay, so, again, their, their role is to advise the GSA board on a number of items. All right. So, the chicken or the egg kind of a thing. We have, we're forming, we've, in proposing to have this agency form, but it doesn't have a revenue source. So, we have gap funding. There's startup costs that need to be covered until such time as rates can be imposed. And these could be most likely property taxes for, to generate the revenue, to make this a self-funding, sustainable agency. And so, what's in the JPA and what's proposed is an equal, equal share of the estimated year one and year two startup costs. And with Sebastopol out of the picture, the city of Cotati's share would be $55,000. And I think the only thing I'd have to add to that, and it's equally shared, it's equally shared, is that going alone, if we were to do our own GSA agency, it'd be at least twice, three, even three times that amount because of the complexities I mentioned before. We would form our GSA, but it's for sure that the county or somebody else would say, well, you know, we're doing the plan. You've got to pay us for that. And so, we'd be paying them, and we'd be paying our, you know, having to have our own consultants and work, generate our own products. And it'd be really complex. In my opinion, pretty ineffective, because we just don't have the staff for that level of effort. We wouldn't leverage all the resources that these groups could do together. The estimated one-year startup cost for the different basins are on this slide here. And they are administration costs, they're technical, you know, producing technical reports, and a number of other items. It's, it's taking advantage of collaboration, cooperation between the different basins. And certain things, the board meetings have been reduced to six times a year instead of monthly, bi-monthly, just certain things to try to cut down the costs. And then, what, this is very favorable comparison to what's happening around the state with the other GSAs that are looking to form. Okay. So, the slide shows the $55,000 that all the agencies would be contributing. The Sonoma RCD is spread out amongst the three basins. So, they're looking, we're only asking them to do a reduced contribution when you compare it by basin. And we're looking for an initial commitment, be able to write the check on July 31st, and at least of a part of that commitment. So, for our commitment would be, and I hope Norman Pelosi is here, because it would have to be an $18,000 check for our Water Enterprise Fund to make that happen. And then, before the end of the year, that would have to add up to $55,000. Some of the work in the first year and the second year would be, is proposed to be done by certain eligible entities. For example, the Sonoma, Gold Ridge RCD is proposing to be the interim administrator for this agency. So, prepare agendas, conduct the meetings, you know, do, do, to the administrative tasks. And then, the county would be sort of, keep the, I don't know, I think it's a fiscal agent, be, keep track of the money in an interim basis until it becomes a sustainable agency. The water agency would do grant research, grant funding applications, and would continue their outreach, which they've been doing. And, lost my train of thought. It's a complex topic, so I gotta keep on track here. So, yeah, there's just a number, and those are in the calculation. And they, they have that expertise to perform those tasks. And so, we would have, we have scopes of work for those, those activities. Okay. Because the city of Cotati has very, you know, we're a small city and we have limited staff. We did not volunteer for in-kind services. We'd just, I think we're proposing just to write the check for $55,000 and participate on the advisory committee and on the board. All right, so, the members, like I mentioned, of the agency staff would be performing those duties to get the agency rolling. So, there's no new staff envisioned for the agency. Wouldn't have its own staff for the first year. Staff will serve as interim administrator. And then, this is just discovering what I talked about, the technical services, monitoring, fiscal services, and the outreach would be, would be done with in-kind services. Okay. All right, so, what's next? We, as well as the other eligible entities in April and May, are having these meetings to consider adoption of the JPA. And if, I had given a summary of that, what's been happening. So, Gold Ridge, I don't know if I have to go over that again, but so far, one, two, three, four, five, six, six of them have, have met and have passed, except for, five of those have passed at Sebastopol, which wasn't a surprise, said no. So, it's, it's all moving in the direction of, a favorable direction for the JPA. If the city, well, the JPA looks like it's got enough momentum to move forward and become an agency with or without the city. And, but they're envisioning the first meeting of the board to be on June 1st. And they would say, okay, we're going to form, we're going to appoint a chair in person and a vice chair, and then hold a vote to form the agency. And then, the next action would be, after the meeting, would be to inform the state that, yes, we formed our agency. We've met your deadline, and, you know, here we are. So, okay. And this slide just shows when these meetings are going to occur. So, we've got the Sonoma RCD yet to happen. And I think that's about it. Oh, Santa Rosa. One more second, thank you. Yeah, so, two more after today. All right, recommended actions. So, there's two groups of actions. One is to adopt a resolution which would approve the city participation in the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And then, coupled with that, authorize, authorizing the mayor to execute the joint exercise of powers agreement, creating the Santa Rosa Plain GSA, and substantially the form presented. Which, which means there might be some typos or some really minor, they'd have to be really minor changes that could then continue moving forward without us going through this process again. But they'd have to be really minor. So, it's allowing for, like, typos. And then, the second group of action is by motion, make the council appointment to their Santa Rosa GSA board. So, appoint a director and an alternate. And then, authorize the city manager to begin the process of appointment to the advisory committee. Okay, for, that's going to be staff, staff. And then, dissolve the city council ad hoc. And I understand there's, there were some, well, we had formed an ad hoc in December. And my understanding from the meeting minutes, it was Susan Harvey and John Deloso. Kind of morphed into Mark Landman and John Deloso and Susan Harvey. So, anyway, the action tonight is to dissolve that, because we now have, we would, we would have a board on the, serving on the GSA. Lot of stuff here. So, with that, I'd hope for any questions you might have.
So, actually, before we get started, just one clarification on the, on the ad hoc. So, Susan Harvey and even, it was a misprint in the staff report. Mark Landman was the other ad hoc member. And I also wanted to point out that the ad hoc worked with Craig and I a lot on JPA. It was kind of a painful process.
To say the least.
Yeah, Susan can attest. And our, actually, our ad hoc was largely responsible for the simplified voting structure that you see in the JPA today. It was a much more convoluted and painful process prior to our ad hoc getting involved in it. So, for that, it's very much appreciated.
Do you have a question?
I just had a quick question. When we go through the list of recommendations and either move or don't move to adopt, do we need to include a 1B of authorizing the mayor as it states there? Or is it incorporated? What's that?
That's contained in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution that with one vote.
Okay, thank you for that.
You don't have any questions? Well, I'll just add a little bit before I, well, I'll open up for public comment. Anyone want to speak on this? Yes, Lori.
This is very interesting that you're spending so much time on groundwater. When it comes down to it being a citizen's property and groundwater, you don't give a, I'm not going to use the word. I would like to say that next door, it was the fire department had classified it as hazmat materials. The city had sole jurisdiction. The city did not allow multiple power washing into the groundwater. The sediment was tested high in chemicals and metals. You did not enforce one building code for 14 months, especially those first four months. This was all before Greg Scott's, Craig Scott's time. But when you come down to groundwater and protecting people, you didn't do it. You endangered my family. You endangered my health, my, are all the animals in the area, the wildlife. There is still damage there from groundwater contamination. And there's, you look at the trees, they're still damaged. There's all these things that have to happen because of your neglect. And then, you sit here and you're spending all your time on all this stuff and spending money on reports and all this to join this. But you need to really look in your own backyard of what you did almost three years ago. Because the fire department had insisted it was a hazmat situation and materials, and it needed to be cleaned up. You did nothing for my family, other than let the neighbors harass us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, George?
I believe Lori Alderman is 100% correct. The city dodged a bullet by her family not suing the city to high heaven over what they've endured. On another note, I'd like to thank Mr. Scott. I thought that was a fabulous report. I'm really liking Mr. Scott's reports. He's had some very good reports in the past. They're easy to follow, very comprehensive. The one thing that was missing from the report that I see is how much is this going to cost ratepayers? I assume joining the JPA is going to, the cost is going to be passed on to us consumers. Not too much talk about that. Maybe I could hear about that. But, Mr. Scott, well done. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that. So, in the presentation, there were some, there were some costs in there. There's startup costs. One of the first things that, that has to be done before the plan can be adopted is a study, a rate study, to see what it will cost. There are many different methods and ways this could take on. There's methods around per parcel, there's methods around use, there's, you know, so there, it will take a while to do a study. That's one of the things that the board will, will look at. But it, we don't have that information or data at this point. So, right now, that's why it's startup, startup costs. I will say that staff did an excellent job on keeping, fighting for what it is. I will say that staff did an excellent job on keeping, fighting for what it is that we kept asking for, because when we first saw this JPA, it did not look like this. And it had some very serious flaws with the voting structures, and it would take a, you know, just about a rocket scientist to kind of sort it out. So we were able to simplify it at, we were able to simplify, you know, who's on there, you know, plain and simple, if you're GSA eligible, you're in. If you're not, you're not. Because there was a whole lot of, you know, things about that. We were able to work through the ex officio seat, so that if you're in the process and, you know, in good faith, you're in the process and you, you meet certain steps, we, we said, okay, that's fine, you can join us, be part of the conversation, you don't get to vote until you kind of go through the process. And as was pointed out, there's a couple of different ways for that to work, so I think that that was pretty fair. Financing, we were also the city that kind of said, well, we didn't particularly care for it being split up evenly, but we got a whole lot of pushback on that, but what we were able to then in turn have included in here, and that's that when startup, after the startup happens and we collect fees that will get paid back, so that we were able to get that in there. So we fought pretty hard on this, there were some pretty intense meetings, I think that facilitator was a little bit frustrated with us. I also attended the community meeting, there were a lot of folks, a lot of folks, you know, probably a couple hundred people at that meeting. You know, a good portion of them were private well owners and they wanted to be sure that they were represented, so I thought that all the staffs that were there did a very good job of explaining how that would work. There was a whole group of folks that really didn't understand the bill itself and wanted to know why Alexander Valley in particular, there were a whole bunch of people that said, why isn't Alexander Valley having to do this? It's just like, well, they haven't been declared a medium, so that's not to say they never will, they're relooking at that, but, but a lot of people were very upset with that. One of the things about this being a JPA and having the cities involved, Craig alluded to it, but right now, we as cities work very well together with the water agency to deliver water. So this is really just a piece of that. The slide that talks about municipal water and rural usage and all that, you have to keep in mind that that's only part of the picture, because we get our water from the Russian River, also called surface water, and we also use wells. So it's all of the cities working together to manage their individual wells and manage that surface water that makes it clean water available to everyone and, you know, managing it together. So, so I think this is appropriate for us to work together on that. And as usual, it was not a lot of fun getting a JPA. It's the usual sticking points. You, you could kind of see it on the slide, but I did speak to Sebastopol, you can kind of see it on the picture, but basically, they had this thin little sliver, and so they just didn't feel that, that it was really something that they, they wanted to weigh in on at this point, other than in an advisory manner, unlike the rest of the cities. So again, oh, the other thing that was very clear at the, at the community meeting, and that's that if we don't do this, the state will do it, and we will, we, the collective we, none of us will like what the state dictates. And as it was said, they will do a one size fits all for all of the state. So it, it's much better if we locally determine what happens to us than, you know, have dictated on us, you know, same thing because there's problems in Southern California. So some of the things that they could, you know, put on us could be far worse than, you know, what we may do to ourselves. So that's my two cents worth, and again, I appreciate all the work you guys did in, in supporting us on this. So with that.
Comments?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you again for the, the staff report, it was incredibly thorough. I want to thank you for the part, especially where I got credit for being on the subcommittee. Because I looked at that when I was reading that over the weekend, it's like, no, I was never on that subcommittee. I think it's mandated, and so here we are, another state mandate coming our way, do it your way or do it our way, and if it's done our way, as I think Mr. Scott mentioned, that the cost would have been two to three times, probably closer to three times this $55,000 in the first year. And it's just, you know, here we go again, here's another $55,000 out of the budget, you know, it's, it's a good thing we have money set aside, not in the general fund, but you know, certainly in water and sewer for things like this. So I guess we've done, you know, certainly the best that we could do with sort of the cards we were dealt, using a cliche, because I think, you know, if we didn't, if we don't, we haven't done it yet, but if we don't join and we are sort of mandated to do something, then it's going to cost us significantly more, then it impacts the ratepayers potentially even worse. So trying to keep these costs as low as we can, I think is really good. Having been on countywide JPAs over the last four years, I've actually seen a real improvement, and I don't see the, the big players demanding two votes and two positions on these JPAs. I'm seeing that kind of starting to disappear, so kudos to getting that part of it done. Thanks.
Nothing really to add, actually, no, I just, I like the idea of having local control, especially like you were saying, otherwise it's just going to be mandated how we handle things, and it'd be much better to have a seat at the table. Okay. With that, what would you like to do?
We have four motions that are coming our way. You want to start? We'll tag team?
Sure. I would move to adopt a resolution appoint approving the joint exercise of powers agreement, creating the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
I'll second that.
We need to do them individually? Yeah.
Might as well.
Wait, that's clean.
Yeah, I think we should do it. We'll do four motions, is that appropriate?
Does that work?
Four motions.
The resolution is for approving the agreement and approving execution by the mayor. That takes care of two of them, and then I think you can do a motion for the other two, which is the, there are three, appointment of a director and alternate director and the decision to, the city manager to do the advisory committee.
And then dissolving. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Together, we'll get it.
We'll get it. Well, okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Let that show a 3-2 vote. We need to appoint a director and an alternate director to sit on the board of directors of the Santa Rosa Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Has anybody expressed?
Well, for crying out loud, you just made a motion there, almost. That was really close. So would the subcommittee, is the desire for the subcommittee to continue? You should have at least spoken to one of the subcommittee members.
I certainly believe that I would be willing to do that.
Okay. And have, have you and the vice mayor, I was trying to be kind of subtle there, that you were the one person you should have talked to?
I did talk to myself.
Good, good.
I do occasionally.
Has Mark expressed interest?
And since he's not here, if you're interested in being the alternate, we can always appoint him as the mate, just saying, just saying. I have not talked to him about that, have you, Damian?
Only in that it was likely to.
Likely to happen?
Come out this way.
Okay. I mean, he's been very good, you know, he, he, he made quite a lot of points at our meetings, so, so he was a very big asset.
And is there a preference as to director versus alternate director?
I don't mind being the director.
Okay. So I'm writing this down, hold on. Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I move to appoint Mayor Harvey as our City of Cattati Director and Vice Mayor Landman as the alternate director to sit on the board of directors of the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
Aye, I'd second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let that be a 3-2 vote. Thank you. That was, that'll be loads of fun.
Yes.
I would move to authorize the city manager to appoint a staff representative and alternate from the city to advise, to the advisory committee.
We'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another 3-2 vote.
And move to dissolve the city council ad hoc committee and anybody who may have been even remotely affiliated with that committee, effective immediately.
I would second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll tell you how that happened. So I went back, because I'm like, well, what did we do? So in August, we did do that, but then in December, when we went through all of our assignments, we kind of shuffled some things around, that's sort of how that happened, because the meetings were during the day.
Right.
And that was a problem, so that's how that, because we did the first one through the end of 16, and then for 17. So I did go back and watch that. Mr. Scott's leaving us. I don't know what that's all about. Uh, we voted.
We voted.
Yeah, uh huh. We have now dissolved the ad hoc committee. So let's see, let's see, let's see. Sorry, lost my place. Yes, city managers report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So first off, as, as I think at least you guys know, there's a budget study session for the general fund on Tuesday evening, May 16th at 6:30 PM. So that's coming up, since we've finished the strategic planning sessions. And then, and we'll announce this again next, at the next meeting, but on May 25th, it's Public Works Week that week, and the Public Works Department on May 25th plans to open the corporation yard at One Tribune to the public in the early afternoon from 2:30 to 4:30 PM as part of that celebration. And some police updates. So I think you all are well aware of, you know, what they are regularly doing, and they're busy out there every day, but you also may not know that they're, recently, they've, they've made some really high, higher profile arrests, arrests that have, you know, made the newspapers. And one of them was the person who was responsible for the miniature horse hit and run down in Pen Grove. One of our alert officers saw that car passing through the city and, and pulled over and arrested that individual. There was also some great undercover work from, from our sergeant who arrested the person that was responsible for a series of burglaries throughout Sonoma County. So it was a kind of a, I'm sure this is the wrong word for it, but kind of like a sting operation. I'm sure the chief will correct me later. And then also, our PD assisted Sebastopol in the recent Apple Blossom Parade, and we'll be assisting the Petaluma, Petaluma for the Butter and Eggs Parade that's coming up. And as you know, and in turn, they, they provide us with assistance for Kids' Day and other special events that we may have. We had them, you know, like for the Train Depot ribbon cutting, cutting when the first train came through, they helped us with safety and crowd control, so it's a, it's a good mutual arrangement. Some construction updates, Myrtle Landscaping is complete, and as the new plants grow in, it'll be a welcome improvement to this heavily traveled street, so I know at least council member Deloso, who lives down there, has seen it, but it, yeah, it looks much nicer. And we currently have on our schedule that the paving contractor is going to be doing some work on Overwood Highway this, later this week, allegedly Thursday, is the rumor we hear, to do some spot repairs on the roadway. And as you know, as Director Scott, Public Works Director Scott had mentioned before, this is obviously no charge, you know, fixes to the roadway. And then, as has been reported before, we do have AMI meters, and those are the remote read, remote read water meters. And they do let customers know when they have leaks, and we've reached out to many customers to date, and they've gotten quite a few thank yous from customers from telling them about leaks they didn't know about before it showed up on their water bill. Because as you know, we bill every two months, so we've been able to reach out to people almost, you know, almost right away when there's leaks that are noticed, so that they can correct them and, and save themselves a lot of money from an expensive water bill. And we are also continuing to sign new customers up for Water Smart, which is the online portal, the water conservation and water use portal. And we're looking to get customers signed up to automatic bill pay to streamline the bill payment process. And some other good news that, that I reported in the budget study session, but I'll report it here again in the council meeting, is that recently Fitch upgraded our tax allocation bond issuance from A+ to double A, given the city's recent management of this bond, 2001 bond issuance. And that's in large part to the, the council and our administrative services directors' management of city finances, that we've had that recent bond rating increase, so that's great news. We also have, on a different topic, we have often public information, or public requests for information about how to remove trees and tree cutting, and it seems to be sort of an ongoing thing. So the Community Development Department has put together a public information brochure for tree removal, and this brochure sets out the criteria and permit process for removal and replacement of trees in the city. And it's intended to provide our residents with the clear and concise information they need when considering whether or not to remove a tree. And these are available in hard copy and online and on the Community Development Department's webpage. And also a copy will be mailed to all the Cattati households and one of our upcoming utility mailings, just to get the word out on how to, how to manage trees on your property. And then finally, recreation news, on April 15th, it's a Saturday, we hosted, sorry, this is a past event, we hosted Build the City of Cattati Out of Legos with Playwell Technologies, and we had about 60 participants come. We had Lego versions of Oliver's Market, Sal's Pizza, City Hall, the Cattati Police Station, La Plaza Parks Stage, and much more, I think you might, if you've seen the city's Facebook page, some of those pictures are on there. And it was a great, it was a great event. And for children that would like more Lego time, which, which a child wouldn't want more Lego time, adult wouldn't want more Lego time for that matter, there's two Lego STEM camps coming up in July. And that's very exciting. And then beginning earlier this month, Alkemia began offering art and theater classes in our classrooms three times a week. And Alkemia is a non, is a local nonprofit organization that, that nurtures the creative expression of individuals with disabilities as a vehicle for personal growth and accomplishment. And these classes will be ongoing to provide opportunities for students in Cattati and surrounding neighborhoods. And in July, in fact, the students, students from the school will be performing at our Kids' Day Festival, so get to see a public performance there. And last weekend, Star Kids Productions performed their Wizard of Oz show with 11 students, these are the five to seven-year-old students. There were over 220 guests in attendance over the weekend, and it was, it was a great success. These are multiple showings, we had two showings, but still a lot of people. And then the next event is Shrek Jr., which will be performed, performed in the beginning of May, and we already have 30 participants in that, so I think we're going to have to clear the parking lots for that one. And then on Friday, May 12th, there'll be a decorative sign making and painting class in the Cattati Room, and this is one of the, as, as you've all heard, one of the numerous fundraisers out in the community related to the project grad, graduation. And it'll be held in the evening from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. And then lastly, we have opened up registration for summer camps and programs. We're offering over 10 camps this summer, including Lego camps, theater camps, sport camps, Spanish camps, and then your traditional day camps. No, they're very exciting, I don't, just everything else seems so much more exciting, but. For more information or to register for our programs, you can call Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or A. Wilson at cattatisity.org. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Damian. With that, city council member reports?
I'll be brief. There was a lab meeting on April 18th, which unfortunately I was unable to attend, but they're having an event May 1st, which I think might actually be, I don't know if it's just the Maripack Cattati Library that's doing this, or if it's going to be all of them, but because all of the libraries are now going to be open on Mondays again, they're having a celebration to commemorate that, beginning of that on May 1st. So more details to follow, but they should definitely be on the library's website if anybody's interested in attending that. Unfortunately, I will be at work all day. We had strategic planning that same evening. On the 13th, we had the mayors and council members dinner up in Hillsburg, which was very nice and well attended. And then I have a water bond conference call tomorrow afternoon. So that's quickly coming up, but that is all I have to report for right now.
Ditto on half of those, but I can add, Ag and Open Space, because it's been a while since our last two council meetings ended around 12:30. I think most of us said, we don't have any council reports and we'll do it next time, but we've done that twice. So I don't know where I left off. However, I will say for Ag and Open Space, we have a matching grants subcommittee. The matching grants is a program Open Space does every other year. In this past year, we had about $3 million, and this is to any city entity or nonprofits that are doing things that are related to agricultural preservation and/or open space. And so we met, we allocated out a $2.5 million, 2.7 million in, in project money, but there was a little bit of confusion, more from the applicant's side. And so I had recommended that we take a look at the criteria. So we're going to be doing that because we're now a little over a year out from the next cycle. So we're going to be doing that this summer, and there's a subcommittee that's been formed to, to work on that. And we actually have one, two, three, four, five vacancies on the advisory committee, which is a lot, two of which are from the second district, our district. So Supervisor Rabbit, I think already may have a couple of names in mind. If there's other names people want to recommend, I'd be happy to share those with them. There's a vacant position in the fifth district, which is Supervisor Hopkins District. And then there's an agricultural position. There's, besides the two from each of the supervisory districts, the three from the Mayors and Council Members Association, there's an environmental position, a real estate position, an agriculture position, and a business position, and also a youth member. And that position is also going to be coming up, so we're going to do some recruitment for that in all of our local jurisdictions. And we'll have a meeting this coming Thursday, too, so there'll be more to report out. That's it.
Okay. Before I move from his, it might be worthwhile to let Julie know of some of those opportunities. That might be something she, she's interested in since she showed an interest. Just a thought. May 13th, I attended mayors and council members, May, April 13th, I'm confused, strategic planning on the 18th. Then I attended the Waste Management Agency meeting, where I'm happy to report that all of the cities have now signed the JPA. So that was pretty exciting news and painful and long and crazy. The other thing that we had a presentation on is they're working towards putting out an RFP to bring the composting, long-term composting solution. So originally, there were 16 companies that replied to the RFI. Some made it pass, some didn't make it pass. And so the RFP will be going out. And basically, we kind of said, you know, the more the merrier, let's, let's hear their, their proposals on what they want. Some of them we've heard are joining together, so it ought to get pretty interesting. There will be another public workshop on long-term organics at the Vets Memorial Building on April 27th this week from 3:00 to 6:00. So I'll probably end up going that, because we got a lot of really good feedback from folks. So that was good. I did a talk at the Realtors Meeting on April 20th. It was very well attended. They had probably got a good hundred Realtors there, so that was, that was good. And then I attended a meeting about the Sonoma Run Water Saving Partnership. They're in the process of kind of renewing, renewing that, and we're circling around to get feedback from, from the members. And I think that's all I got. So, any questions? Nope. So public, public comment on non-action agenda items? Yes, Lori?
I'd like to request that you, as a council, please direct Mark, Damian Obit, not to act in a more professional manner. The last 10 or so emails I've received, I've received the same response that is demeaning and degrading to me. And he keeps sending it and sending it to any issue. I wish, the other thing is, I think that you should hand that nice little tree, how due, to Mark Lambon, since he had cut down five trees without permits in front of you guys, and you did nothing. I guess it doesn't, these building permits and everything do not apply to any of you on the council, just as citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. George?
I'd like to comment on the city managers' report and possibly a future agenda item for you to consider. I would like you to take a look at the front steps of City Hall and the adjoining parts of the building next to this front steps. Maybe during the daytime, it might be more apparent. But it's looking pretty shabby. There's a lot of mold, dirt, and grime on the front steps and on the side walls there that should be power washed. You know, this is the entrance to the most important building in the city. And I think over time, walking up and down those steps, I think we kind of tend to, kind of turn a blind eye to it, not notice it. But it's gotten very grimy. And the last time I brought this up, the Public Works Department was out there within a few days and they power washed it, and it did a very nice job. I just want you guys to look at it again. Then also, Madam Mayor, I, I don't question your, your impression of why these meetings, this last meeting was not recorded properly and so forth. I'm not questioning you, I'm questioning the company. I think you're getting the runaround. I don't think there's any possible way that you can upload, upstream 186 gigabytes of anything out of this building in five hours. It would take days. So I know the company who involved here, I can take it upon myself to go have a little talk with them about this, and I appreciate the staff looking into it as well. Let's see, the last item was about, what was it? Something that Damian had pointed out. I forget now, but I also want to bring your attention to the media area that was set up some years ago. I haven't seen any member of the media here using that area. Haven't seen a news camera here from any news crew, any recorders and so forth. I think that's just, it's tend to be a little ridiculous over there, demanding that news media be in that area. I always propose that there should be a media table here for journalists who want to come down and have some area to work. We used to have a table over to the, this side of the room some years ago for the media. It was very respectful to the media, where they could do their work, they could have their notes out in front of them, and the public could, could address them in respect of that manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, can I, it's interesting that you commented on the steps because I happened to notice the steps last week, and it actually was my husband and myself that came down and power washed it the last time that, that you did that. And I was just thinking last week, it's almost as if you were reading my mind, that maybe it was time for us to pull the power washer out again, but maybe we could get Public Works to do that. If not, I know where our power washer is.
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Beric's offer to contact the cable company. Since this is city business, I, I really think that should be left up to city staff, and you're not city staff, you're not a council member, so thank you for your offer, but I think that's, the city staff will definitely follow up on that. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay. With that.
I have a right to do my own research, you sir.
Do we have any information received after the agenda was posted? Okay, there was none. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:03. Thank you.